All right, we're gonna call it to order the city council meeting for Monday, August 1st, 2022. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jamie, roll call.
Jeff Delkey. Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tracy Coach. Tim Petrie.
Here.
Jason Ring.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Here.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
All right, on to number four, which is consideration of any council member requesting to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Tonight, we have one, which is Darla Leclerc. So we're looking for a motion to bring her in via remote. Do I have a motion for that? Thank you, Bill, second by Jason. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Jamie.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now, on to our public hearing. We have one under A. It's a public hearing for an ordinance to amend the district map, section 10-1-3, A1, of the municipal code for a change in zoning from B1 Business District to R3 Single and Double Family Resident District at 1723 East Street. That is 26 square feet of land, is that correct?
That's right. Type on the agenda. It is not anywhere close to 26 acres. It's all of 26 square feet.
Of land is intended to be added to 1715 East Street, which is zoned R3 Resident District. So we will, the recommended action here is a motion to waive reading and adopt that ordinance. Is there any other background that you want before we open it up?
This is related to a conveyance from an adjoining property owner to the owner of 1723 East Street. The only problem is, the two parcels had different zonings, so they can't become one unified parcel with two zonings applicable. So this would correct that and allow that 26 square feet to have the same zoning as the parcel it's being added to.
Okay, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please step up to the podium. My right, your left, state your name and address for the record. We will have three calls for the public hearing. Opening up, call number one. Closing call one, opening up call two. Closing call two and opening up the third and final call. All right, we are closing the public hearing, and we are looking for a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Scott, thank you very much. Any council discussion?
I think that motion...
Yeah, we probably should. Maybe stated as I read it.
Yeah, the ordinance in front of you is correct, but the agenda listing was wrong. But that correction for the record is probably a good thing.
Yes, it is right in our packet. Yep. The one that we will sign. All right, anyone else? All right, Jamie, roll call vote, please.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunis.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, guys, very much. On to six, input from the public. Anyone wishing to talk to the council regarding something that's on this agenda or something you'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address for the record, and we'll open up the public hearing. Or, I'm sorry, the input from the public. I wanna go backwards.
I am here. All right, we had another beer bash.
Can you state your name?
My name is Dorothy Tinkum Delo. I live at 2100 Garfield Street. I'm a registered tax payer and a full-time resident, as is my registered dog. And I feel I should be able to stay in my own home without being abused. Now, we had a god-awful beer bash. You all know about that. I tried to call all eight of you. One of you had a full mailbox. One of you listed a wrong number, and one of you, just, it didn't work. Following the beer bash, there was a lovely snow fest. There were families and fun and no horrid, throbbing, never-ending drums going on late in the night for two days. And a little boy in my neighborhood came to speak to my puppy. My nephew bought me a mill puppy, and he's a scaredy cat, skittish, oh my goodness, nervous Nellie dog. And he, the little boy went down, as little boys do, they put their feet apart and they bend down so that their bottom's about an inch from the sidewalk. And he's petting the dog, and he said, you know, he said, "The beach bash had a good carnival. The carnival at the bash was shitty. So I have a new word for your beer bash: shitty. I pay taxes on my home in a residential area. There are thousands of cheapo beer joints in this state. Why does our lovely beach have to get down scaled every year for this horrible event? It didn't use our pavilion. We built this beautiful pavilion. You all took part in it. And the pavilion has provision for, dear, for speakers to go out over the lake so that the sound goes from parking lot one all the way up to six and out to the people in the recreational vehicles. And I feel that the events at the beach should be limited to being on the pavilion. The beer bash wasn't a beach bash. It was a street bash. It had a flat bench truck aimed at the street. I'm four blocks away, over Neshota Park, past Polk, past Pierce. And my house reverberated for hours and hours and hours with my doors closed, with my windows closed, with my puppy in a crate with an afghan over the crate. And we could not get away from the throbbing drums. So I'm asking this council, whenever you have anything at the beach, that one, you use our pavilion, that the speakers are towards the beach, and that a council member be in, be there, present at all times. Because right here, in this month's little thing, it says that our noise limits in Two Rivers are 60 decimals daytime, 50 decimals nighttime after 10. God knows, that had to be much more than 80 decimals because my whole house shook. And those nasty abusive drums went on and on and on, and it shouldn't be happening. You should think upscale, don't think downscale, and you should consider the residents. Now, I just thought that child was absolutely adorable. And you know, the carnival, the carnival had like three rides the first time around. But here it is. This is your very own thing for next time, because now you wanna put terrain vehicles on our streets, which I think is a pretty stupid idea. But anyway, that's what I'm here for. Please, use our pavilion. Make this a requirement for anyone renting our beach. All speakers should be aimed towards the beach since the events are supposed to take place on the beach. And a council member, one of you, should be there with a decibel meter to make certain that you're not abusing the residents. Okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else for input from the public?
My only comment, and I'm not taking issue with Dorothy on any issues, but the decibel meter does become irrelevant when the council waives the noise ordinance. And for the event in question, as well as most other events that we know, music's going past 10, it was a waiver. So if you don't waive it, then there's a decibel meter you probably could borrow from the police department. But I did wanna point that out. I'll leave, I'll leave the rest comments speak for themselves.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else for input from the public before we move on? All right, seeing none, we will go to council communications. Anyone have any letters or other communications they'd like to talk about from citizens? Bonnie? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Darla.
Okay, I think we all probably had a chance to see this today, but there was a, an email that came through the contact city council portal, and it had to do with parking and kinda capitalizing on the people from out of town who come to use our beaches, and to come up with some sort of a system where they pay a nominal fee. It would help us with, you know, paying for our beach grooming. I think that we stick the scan around a little bit, you know, over at least the last year, if not longer. And I think we really need to address it. And I was thinking, too, that if there was, we have other amenities that people come here for, such as their trails. And I'm just, Greg, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Along Memorial Drive, the parking areas, are those city property?
Those, you know, I'd have to double check if they're within the right-of-way or not. But the fact is, DOT, for several years now, has said, "We will do, we will pay for zero maintenance on those." They're not the highway proper, so the city has been maintaining them. We do incur a cost to plow them in the winter so people can pull off and enjoy the lake. And, you know, some nominal cost was sweeping and re-striping occasionally in the summer. So the trail, effectively, the trail and the waysides are a city maintenance responsibility.
Okay, so I mean, that could be included, too, because you could have people who come back so many, so many times, you know, to use our trails and to stay at the beach. And I think we could, we could pay for a lot of these costs, if we look at it. So I would like to propose that we start looking at that seriously.
Okay, thank you. I know Bonnie had some communications as well. Bonnie?
Um, I think everybody got this email, but I had been in touch with this man that was wondering about businesses outside of Two Rivers being on this new city website. And he was wondering if they pay a fee. Just before I looked at my email, and he was going to come, and then he said he couldn't make it. So I said I would say something about it. That was, I hope I got the essence of what he was trying to say. He just was wondering if you are from out of town, is there a fee?
There is presently not a fee. I expect most of you have heard from the gentleman tonight. I have as well. There's not a fee. We had a business director that was very outdated with the old website. There's been an earnest effort to update that and get it current. And there's been good feedback from the businesses, mostly Two Rivers businesses. A judgment call, council can certainly put it on an agenda and provide policy direction if you like. The area at issue is realtors that are listed. Where the location of the office is in Manitowoc. All I can say is, as we considered it as a staff, a number of people whose offices are outside of Two Rivers, are local residents who probably practice more from their homes and their vehicles and their cell phones than from a physical location in Manitowoc. And that, that was the basis for the inclusion of those. Now, I get it, because I, as I sit here, I sure wouldn't want to say, well, we have someone that works at Walmart or somebody that works at Office Depot, therefore, those businesses should be listed as Two Rivers businesses. But the thought on realtors was, we have an array of realtors that are all actively engaged in selling properties in Two Rivers. Many of them reside here as well. And that, that was the rationale. It ain't, it ain't perfect. And if council would want this on an agenda and provide direction otherwise, hopefully we don't get into too many specific directions on how to administer a business directory. But that one, I get the point. There's not a location for that brokerage, per se, in Two Rivers. Maybe more than one out there like that. They're not paying property taxes here, where the office, other offices that are here are. But the thought was, it's a service, and certainly, we see a number of active realtors that are from throughout the county. And many of them are our people that live here.
Okay, anybody else? Any more from you, Bonnie? Okay, anybody else? Jeff?
I had several of them again. A gentleman approached me and wanted to know why our utility bills are being billed out of California. And if they are in fact being billed out of California, what was the person that is doing, had been doing the billing, doing? No. Greg, can you?
I know we are having WPPI generate our bills now. Brian or Dave, do you wanna? I, to tell you the truth, I didn't notice where the postmark was on them, but...
Never noticed neither, but it brought my attention.
They also have a new, and we think much improved, format. Yeah, Dave, get it?
Yeah, we have recently gone to a service called InfoSend. InfoSend is a mailing service that is the preferred provider of our billing software of WPPI, Wisconsin Public Power Incorporated, and, and the North Star billing system that we use, being that they are the preferred, we went in that direction, and it has worked out very well. It has not slowed, from what we can tell, it hasn't slowed the mail down at all. It's actually processed, it's not processed in California. There's, they're in California, but it's actually, the mail is coming out of Chicago, from what I understand. So it's just, that's the service that we went with because it's the preferred provider of our software.
As far as the question on staff time, if you wanna address that?
It's greatly reduced our staff time as far as having to manually, or not manually, we have a machine downstairs that stuffs the bills. But the printing is no longer done here. The organizing and the stuffing of the bills and the postage, we don't have to run through our postage meter. So it's greatly reduced our time.
But then the question is, the staff that were doing that are?
Are focused on, on things that were being neglected because they were stuffing envelopes. We, collection efforts would be number one. Some of the staff was from my office on the second floor, which we can focus then on, you know, budgeting and, and accounts payable and payroll and streamlining some, some of those things.
And I know sometimes it's a push to get the bills out, and I don't have numbers on it, but I assume there might have been some comp time or overtime associated, because it's, it's a big push on those days.
Likely, yeah.
But California postmark?
Yeah, well, yeah, the company is out of California, yes.
Okay.
My understanding was that the bills were actually being printed and stuffed in Chicago. Now, I haven't gone down there to find out for sure.
Yeah, I usually do, you're homework way more than me, so.
I say, if you guys wanna pay me to go to California and check out this process, I'll be happy to do it. If you drop it at the Two Rivers post office, it's probably gonna, it's gonna have a Green Bay or Northeast Wisconsin stamp on it. That changeover happened at the same time as the change in the billing format that I expect you've noticed. Yes. Which is much improved as far as historic information, plus information helping out to have available online now as well.
It will be. We'll be seeing in the next month or two, month or two, a service called My Account, which is associated with that, which will provide a lot of information that you, that each person will be able to go online and see a lot of their activity on how much water they're using, how much electricity they're using, historical data going back on 12 months, and that sort of thing, so.
I'll pass that on. Another one that I got, somebody called me and in support of doing the broadcasting on cable. And they said you can also do content from TV, if they could possibly get stuff, information from the school boards, also from like county board, that we could still put that stuff on our channel, to get information more accessible to the public, and would fill up some of that air, if it's possible. Another one that I had gotten, and it was not the same email that we got, but another person had approached me, I think it was, might have been at Snow Fest, and wanted to know if there was a possibility to do, pay for parking in the city, especially down at the beach. One other one, I got an email from a guy. He was very disappointed in how the lettering was and the wording was for the flyer that was sent out for the ATV, UTVs. Everything he said on there was cherry-picked negative and never bothered to mention any of the positives that it is for having an ATV, UTV in the city. Which, after I looked at it closer, it was pretty much cherry-picked for negative. We had, then I had one more. Somebody was kinda agitated that we weren't walking in a parade, that we feel necessary to ride, which I'm not, and Scott, this was even after that, that me and you had that discussion, but a couple people had approached me on that, saying, you know, why can't Andre Jacques walk? She start to walk, why can't council walk? They said, what, are you lazy or what? But that's what I got out of them. So I felt they needed to bring that one up, too, because somebody approached me, and I always tell people, I will say anything and ask any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Council Communications.
Do you mind if I bring up one more thing? Um, I called the Public Works over the weekend. I didn't find an emergency number. I wanted to report a missing stop sign. Then I called, and I'm not trying to blame anybody. I just want people to be aware. The police non-emergency room, and I said, "Could you have an officer at least go by, see if they put it up yet?" And I went by before I came here, and it wasn't up. To me, that's a very serious thing. That's not a, like a little thing, you know what I mean? And it's a small, it's a street that a lot of people are not going to travel, but wouldn't you know that some guy would travel on it who's from out of town today or yesterday and have an accident. I just want everyone to be aware of that so that it gets fixed on this end.
Were you able to get through to dispatch? Because if you did and reported that, I guess that is a concern that we'd wanna follow up on.
Was I?
Yeah, you called the non-emergency dispatch number. Did you reach somebody?
Yeah. And she said she'd, I said, "Would you at least send an officer and make sure that I'm right?" Because I wasn't able to check it that day. So I, I mean, when I called, it's like, oh, I, that stop sign, I remember, you know. Well, the point is, and I left a message with the Public Works number, because I, I realize you don't always wanna put, I can see somebody calling and saying, "There's a puddle at the end of my driveway." Of course, that doesn't seem like an emergency, but this one did.
It did. And if I might ask again, about what day this weekend did you call?
Um, yesterday.
Sunday, okay.
I think it was, it was either yesterday or Saturday.
Assistant Chief Miner will follow up, and Ben, if there's other questions for council member Shimilunis. I mean, honestly, a missing stop sign is serious enough. The city, we'd have no qualms with our Public Works standby crew coming in to replace it. You also, though, should have gotten a follow-up call if you left a voicemail. Was that today with Public Works?
Oh, I didn't call today. I, this was over the weekend. I was hoping that if it didn't get taken care of, that maybe at least this morning, somebody would have heard it. Or unless something was wrong with the answering machine, I don't know. I mean, just so everybody's aware of it, because things happen, things go wrong. And I'm not trying, I probably...
That's a valid concern. That should have been taken care of.
Is that something we can call on right now? Because we should be able to get a temporary sign over there if nothing, if it's not up, which Bonnie said it's not.
Let's...
Do you have, do you have the intersection, Bonnie, again?
Uh, Twelson School Street. It's the northwest corner. It was, I should have, it was loose for a long time. And I think, I think someone, I think some kid stole it.
Probably in somebody's bedroom as a decoration. Jim will make a call now, if you would, to, to let our standby crews know. No, that's absolutely right. And you know what? I always urge council members, call ASAP, bring it up at the meeting afterwards, but call ASAP. And I'm sorry if the system let you down there, because that's, that could have serious implications. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff?
I do have one more, and this one's pertaining to the Park Road thing from last week. No, I didn't get down there personally, but I did see some of Tim's pictures. There is definitely a permit violation going on there, because if you have a footing in the ground with rebar coming out of it, Kim, you agree with me on this, right?
I went and looked at the blueprint. They're supposedly just putting a, a large stone on top of it. It seems odd to have a footing that big to set a stone on, but
Right.
What, that's what's in the plans. I stopped down there and took a look at them.
Oh, you did, okay. Is the footing off the private property on the easement area? Or the right-of-way?
By alongside the, where they took the?
Deck down, right?
The deck off, yeah.
Okay.
I'd have a footing if you weren't, normally footings, you have a permit for it because it's central.
Okay, we can look into that, because certainly inspections advised that there was, there was no work being done that required a permit, because it was landscaping and, you know, poured concrete work and stone. The demolition of the deck was covered under a prior permit. It was a deck that came off. So we can follow up appropriately.
I just found it odd seeing the pictures, and there was rebar sticking out. That just doesn't...
Yeah, that's what kinda threw stuff off, is there's like a lot of rebar sticking up.
We can look at that. I can tell you, I talked, just while we're on that topic, if I might, I talked today with the DNR warden who had been contacted about that. He did stop and talk to engineering, I believe on Monday, Jim's not here, on Monday of last week. I specifically said, you know, "We've heard, we've heard concerns. If there are violations on the public right-of-way owned by the city, we wanna know about those. We wanna be on the same page as the regulatory agency." He confirmed that he hadn't, he'd gone out there, recognized it was difficult to discern where that right-of-way is, and that absent some further evidence of a violation, and I'm just talking about on the city beach road right-of-way, he had not seen the need to do that and for, got a concern for going on private property without proper authorization. I did tell him if there were concerns, the city'd be happy to facilitate that. Again, Mr. McDonald and I didn't see anything that looked like, to our knowledge, would be a DNR violation, but if there's that footing on private property, maybe that's something that at least rises to the need for a permit. We'll follow up on that.
Anybody else?
And Tim, I did get that email that you sent with some information about rights-of-way. I don't know that that's especially pertinent, because we're not asking the council to abandon or vacate the beach road right-of-way, but I will follow up on it. And Attorney Bruce and I have talked a little bit about the state of the law on that, because some of the concerns are being expressed, were, were aired 11 years ago and considered by the council at that time. So.
Anybody else?
Okay, I had a couple, picking back off what Bonnie said earlier about the non-TR businesses being on the city website. I was copied in that email as well. I've talked with Jamie and with Greg on that, so. Also, got a comment on Beach Road wanting to keep that access open all the way down. And then I also got a message from Port Pizza, who wanted me to share a little paragraph with everyone. And Port Sandy Bay would like to thank all the parents and players from baseball and softball programs, as well as the recreation department staff for their participation in this summer's fundraiser. The annual pizza fundraiser for 2022 raised just shy of $6,400 for the rec department, which is double from last year. They appreciate the continued partnership with the city, which allows them to donate to events like fireworks and recreation department programs. Thank you, Travis Port Sandy Bay. So we had a good fundraiser, it looks like, for baseball and softball. That $6,400, I believe, goes right back into the youth recreation fund, is that correct?
My understanding, yes.
Yep.
Better yet, it's the rec department's understanding.
So thank you to all the players that went out to sell, but also thank you to everyone that bought and participated in that over the, over the summer.
Thanks to Port Sandy Bay for being a great business partner with the city. It's great.
Okay, we will move on to number eight, which is council, oh, I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Also, it was brought up to me about having that public access big enough so that the fire department and stuff could get down there with, for emergency services on the beach.
Let me talk to those departments. I've seen that assertion. I, we have access certainly at the, well, the whole length and the show of it, especially at the, what do you call it, the jet ski launch. Whether that has been a concern, I know it was highlighted as a concern to council. I've never heard a hue and cry for it, but it's certainly a rationale or a supporting reason to improve the public access. Yeah.
Could I make a comment? Because I went to see it, too. Their private property is like, what, 12 inches on the public access? If you really wanna get a fire truck down there, you'd almost have to make a pathway through the trees, take a lot of trees down. Or ambulance, I guess you don't want a fire truck, and there's all water over there. But I mean, I, I, what is exactly the problem that every, I mean, what is it that every, because they, Tracy and I went to see her to talk... Tracy and I went to see her, to talk to her and she's, doesn't seem to have a problem with people using the driveway to get there. Didn't, did she say she built that pathway with the fence?
No, um, I think it was already in there.
Okay, and there's even.
And you act, you walk up the side of the driveway, which we did, and you walk around and there's a pathway that takes you all the way down to the beach. It's pretty, it's been pretty much used a lot.
Now, if, if you're afraid of some, uh, someone getting injured on her driveway and blaming us, I can understand that. But I, I'm just not sure.
The, just point of, of information, the privilege agreement requires that the property owner have liability insurance that covers claims arising from their use of the city right-of-way.
Okay.
I haven't been consulted on this. I'm totally stumped on the public access issue as to why there's a problem. And I'm just going to leave my comments at that because these people, to my knowledge, have always been perfectly fine with people walking on the city right-of-way, in which their driveway goes more than 12 inches over onto it. Goes pretty substantially into the right-of-way. They didn't, the current owners didn't build it. The prior owner didn't build it. It dates back to the eighties. Uh, but I understand the permit questions. As far as access for emergency, I hope nobody's proposing you'd cut a swath down there that a fire truck or ambulance could drive. So then the only thing would be personnel and quite honestly, personnel with a stretcher and light duty equipment. I'm not going to speak for the fire, but, or police, but could get there now. So. It's just an issue that's been very quiet for 10 or 11 years and because there's activity on the property, I think has come to attention again. And that's fair. That's what you guys are here for, to address constituent concerns.
Jeff. Uh, this is just going off of a Facebook post that I had seen and I think the police department needs a shout out on this one. Somebody had boating issues and uh, the police department went down there and actually helped them out, get boat out of the water. And they went up above and beyond. They didn't need to do that.
Police or fire?
Police and fire. Not to deflect, but I think fire.
Who Neil was giving credit to?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to give a shout out to the public safety and that people do notice and do appreciate it.
Yep. Yeah, great job by our fire department on that. All right, anybody else? Okay, on to number eight, which is council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anything anyone wants to report on? I'll ask Darla first, since she's on the phone and I can't see her hand. Darla, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I've got two. Um, the first one is our environmental advisory board. We are definitely taking a, a hold of action items and uh, some of the things that we're doing right now that are, are starting to get underway are our, hold on a second. Um, okay, never mind. Okay, uh, what it is is that, one of the things that we, I'm looking at my notes, my notes, oh, here we go. Never mind. Um, one of the things that we wanted to do that we talked about was to have a, putting on a winter educational series at the library that would focus on green issues to include stormwater. And so I sat down with uh, Jeff Dawson over at the Lester Library and thank you Jeff for your time. It was a very productive meeting and it is absolutely doable that we do that. And it would cover stormwater runoff, green infrastructure, pollinator gardens. Uh, and we would talk about the no-mo-me at that time because that's one thing that we had all talked about. And then the benefit of trees, um, Emerald Ash Bore. Uh, we need to address that issue because there has to be some suggestions of good trees that could be used to replace infested trees. And also I want to let you know that I got a lot of really good input from our new Parks and Rec Director, Mike Mathis. So Mike, thank you very much. You know, and you, you're going to be a, um, you're going to be invaluable to us. So just be prepared for phone calls. Um, we do plan on having guest speakers, um, who I'm going to, I'm going to start calling people, engaging interest in availability. And we'll, we'll take it from there. So that's going on. And uh, sorry. So we are looking at other things in E A B. Uh, oh, um, and Greg, you and I talked about this. It was to um, go ahead and come up with a resolution for a city match W P P I new tree grant. Um, so something like that. I would really like to get going on that. It would go to council. You could take a look at it. And you know, um, let's vote on it. And basically what that would be is W P P I has a program where they'll ha- they have a matching grant of $50 to homeowners who want to plant trees on the south or west side of their home. And what we would like to do is really kick this up a notch. And this is incentivizing people to plant trees on their property is to then have a, an additional city match of $50. And of course, there's a, there's a limit on how many trees and I, I think we talked about three or four. So there's a lot of uh, details that we have to iron out before we come back to you guys. So we are, we're still, we're looking at that and, and Greg, maybe if we get together and talk about this seriously and, and get, get something going.
Was there a recommendation out? I've, I gathered you were going to be discussing with the E A B and it is a program that's offered now. Was there a recommendation coming out of it? Cause yeah, we can certainly do a resolution to further publicize it.
Okay, great. So that's what's going on with E A B. And then with uh, Main Street. Um, you know, we've been, we've just been kind of hanging tight until we got a new director. And I don't know if everybody knows, but we do have a new director and that's Jason Ring. Today was his first day of school. So thank you very much, Jason. And uh, you got a lot of people to support you. So um, yeah, and other than that, I don't really have anything new to report, you know, it's about, oh, one thing is that the West Foundation is um, there's a $100,000 grant opportunity. And actually that's how much that they are willing to grant out. It would be split into $50,000 pieces. And I know that Parks and Rec is looking uh, to apply to that for, I think it, I think it was over at the dog park.
Xander.
Mike could speak more to that. So they have, he's got a really good idea as to what Parks and Rec could do with it. Um, but as far as what we're looking at for Main Street is we would be a little bit of competition. Um, is to use that $50,000 for public art. So that's going to be interesting, but I know Jason has, he's got a lot of the information. He's going to start, start checking that out. So that's it for Main Street.
All right. Thank you, Darla. Anyone else have anything to report? All right, scene done. We're going to kick it on over to Greg, City Manager's report.
Okay, we'll keep it, keep it moving. Uh, tonight's report, again, staffing updates, because we don't provide any services without the right people. Uh, the recruitment process and uh, Ben, I don't know if you can affirm or not, I know interviews are completed. Top candidate was identified and an offer's been extended. Either Ben or Jamie, are we still waiting on a, a response to that?
I checked with Drew today and he said not to say for sure.
Okay.
Unless you can.
We don't need names. I was just curious if we are ready to make that happen.
So far, so good, but we're still working on background investigation and all that stuff. So as soon as we have that complete.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't have any concerns, but at this point, we can't say.
That's always a contingency of the final offer. So thank you. Important position. Uh, you know, we've, we've got a lot of property maintenance kind of issues out there and we need to stay on top of those. I've, I've heard from council members several things that have become chronic problems in neighborhoods and none of this gets better with age. So we'll keep you posted on that. Uh, we um, have candidates we're taking a serious look at as far as the applications that are in for Public Works Director, City Engineer. And uh, part-time building, excuse me, Parks and Rec building attendance is pretty much ongoing recruitment. We rely on a lot of young people. Doesn't have to be young people. We're not saying if you're old people, but a lot of part-time employees from the community for those positions. Upcoming retirements, Mr. McDonald will be retiring uh, September 2 in the position of Public Works Director, City Engineer. Again, we're well into the application review process on that with some interviews I expect coming up shortly. Um, Vicky Berg, our zoning administrator and inspections assistant, who's been with the city for 25 years, has recently given, given her notice of intent to retire in late September. That's another vitally important job and uh, we're uh, working on job descriptions and some concepts for how to make that position work best uh, moving forward. More on that. Uh, upcoming recruitments, we also now have a vacancy in the full-time position of Senior Center Program and Special Events Coordinator. That notice was received last Friday. Uh, direct report to the Senior Center Supervisor and the only other full-time staff, right there, yeah. Uh, the only other full-time staff within the Senior Center.
Um, well, we would have three now. Mary started today.
Okay.
As volunteer nutrition.
Oh, that's right. We're back to having the volunteer nutrition coordinator, one of three. So that's a vacancy. And of course, we want to get right on the stick with the zoning administrator inspections assistant. So FYI. Uh, Seventeenth Street Construction Project, yes. The contractor started water main work last Monday. Underground utility work is ongoing and scheduled through August. We hope to see shortly after Labor Day, grading and paving operations underway. Jim, I'm not lying there, am I? That's the latest expectation. Very good. Uh, lateral replacement, the contractor, this is on scattered site laterals. Contractor scheduled to start approximately 10 service replacements uh, per week, starting this week. We have uh, funding and a contract in place for 50 scattered site laterals. Uh, we've already addressed a couple of them on an emergency basis due to service breaks, but those are being addressed around town. And uh, 26th Street, the Eggers Pond Contractors scheduled to install pond plantings in early August and scheduled to perform multiple herbicide weed control activities for prairie planting areas around the pond. And Jim, I've been meaning to ask you, but it comes to mind, is that, that's supposed to look the way it does right now? Cause it's mighty brown over there. Is that uh, meant to be? Okay, in order to help the prairie plantings. The, the geese are in numbers over there. Yeah. Um, we are as a staff and, and we reported on this in closed session uh, last meeting. We are engaged uh, in further discussions with the, the possible developer for the balance of the site. More details to come there. Um, Washington Street Bridge, uh, M S A Professional Services has been identified as DOT's design consultant for that project. Uh, we've been pretty happy over the years when we've worked with M S A as DOT's designers. They uh, were the design engineers for Lincoln Avenue when that was reconstructed a few years ago. So they will be looking at uh, the uh, bridge. Help me again, Jim. Is the right term these days redecking or overlay? Cause overlay to me sounds like just a coat of surface. Redecking, okay. And that is right now planned for 2026, best estimate. Uh, that would be in tandem with resurfacing the entirety of Memorial Drive. Um, the, that's seeming a little more like reality now. We not only know that M S A has been selected as a design consultant by DOT, but uh, our Parks and Rec Director, just in the last day or so, got correspondence on three areas where the DOT needs temporary easements or other permission to do work uh, along Mariners Trail at Spirit of the River's Wayside and in the area of Madison and Memorial Drive in Lakeshore Park. So they're starting to send out letters seeking permission for things like grading easements and guard beam replacement in some areas. So the, the wheels are turning on that project. And frankly, Memorial Drive needs a little bit of love right now. And remember, the bridge overlay project, we expect will also include making the down river side of the bridge, that being the McDonald's side, uh, changing the sidewalk there to a 10-foot wide bike pad facility with a crash barrier to protect those pedestrians and bicyclists from vehicle traffic on Highway 42. So that's a big deal and it will certainly improve that bridge as a link in the trail system. Uh, Central Park West 365, with recent donations received last week, we are officially over 80%, just over 80% of the fundraising goal of $800,000. We stand at about $640,000 and change. 50 plus additional fundraising letters went out last week to local businesses and individuals with the goal of getting our fundraising over the top. Uh, I would note, I plan to bring back to the council at the meeting on the 15th, request to order the stage structure because there's about a four-week engineering lead time and 10 to 12 weeks fabrication lead time on that structure. It's about a, I want to say about a $210,000 purchase. We do have available cash for that. But if we, right now, we're having discussions with the architect, landscape architect and architect about the possibility of city crews installing that with, with a charge for, for the, for the work uh, on two fronts with the idea it could save some money and it could save us some time and maybe help us salvage outdoor performance events next year. Uh, I've got to have more discussion with engineering and public works, but our crews did all the concrete work for the Rotary Pavilion, erected the structure and the sales rep for um, Polygon Structures, who's the fabricator of the stage, indicates that at least two other Wisconsin cities have put up this exact same structure using their crews. And by gosh, if they can do it, nobody has a better crew than we do. So we'll be talking more about that at the next meeting. Uh, again, this is simply a recap. By the way, we share these city manager reports with TRBA membership through their, their mailing list and with the community, of course, on our website. Just a recap of the various donations. One that was finalized last week, and I'm sorry I didn't get a slide in here, but NextEra Energy. Um, this is already counted within that $640,000, but NextEra has confirmed their donation of $30,000 for the decorative lighting, the catenary lighting that hangs over the skating loop. We've received 15,000 of that and the balance will be received uh, in 2023. So big shout out to NextEra. We'll have a Facebook post on that before midnight tonight. Uh, the major funding opportunities that remain, if you're feeling really generous, a naming gift for the park pavilion building that includes restrooms and the multipurpose room. And uh, for individuals or corporate names, there are these wonderful plaques along the seating wall. These are 12 by 18 inches or 12 by 42 inches at 10,000 or 15,000 apiece. Um, for folks looking at smaller donations, household donations, businesses, um, there are still opportunities to purchase the various sizes of pavers or bricks uh, in front of the stage. Another reminder, and we'll be getting this out on Facebook if it isn't already out there today. The public hearing on possibly ordinance amendment to allow ATV and UTV use on city streets is coming in front of council two weeks from tonight, August 15th, 6 o'clock here in chambers. We do actively encourage folks that want to submit comments in advance of the hearing to email the city clerk. It's real easy, j Jackson at T W O dash rivers dot org. That's the designated way to do it. Facebook is great, but Facebook threads sometimes magically disappear too. I was engaged in one two weeks ago that I thought was really great and then it just poof. So please, or come to the meeting, come to the meeting. Uh, but uh, there's two weeks left if people want to weigh in to council or plan to be at that meeting. Kayak launches, we now are happy to say we have city kayak launches on both the East Twin River, where we've had one for, uh, what, excuse me, the West One, where we've had one for a little bit over at, sorry, Fets Park. But now also on the East Twin at Paddler's Park. And there's the new installation uh, shown in photos here. Real easy access to launch and come out of the river. Glad to see Klein Hardware, our one local business that does canoe and kayak rentals, promoting that. So it's, it's good for, it's good for residents. It's good for visitors. Hopefully it's good for business as well. And uh, have had some discussions with staff about opportunities for getting a launch more proximate to the downtown area. One of the areas we've looked at is the end of 19th Street at the East Twin, just north of the Stormwater Pond where there could be a real nice little opportunity there as well. Jeff?
Greg, um, for those launches, the ones at uh, Fets Park, you have to pay to launch your paddle over there?
Right now, the parking applies to vehicles parked there. So there is not, there's not a fee for the, the non-motorized. Yeah. That could be discussed all along. Yeah.
I was thinking so.
Yeah, much of the maintenance expense, maintenance expense over there is providing the park. Of course, people, people bring their canoe or kayak, they park too.
Right.
So that might be something for the ARV to talk about. I don't know what the state of the art is on that sort of thing. I just wanted to do a shout out for the facade grant program, the city's assistance to it. If the grants happen to be for businesses in the downtown central business district, the business improvement district, these grants of up to $10,000 are jointly funded, 50% city, 50% by Main Street. Big shout out to Whitekirt Realty and what is happening with the building at 1603 Washington Street, the old Kresge Building. Absolutely beautiful renovation, the windows are uncovered now, they magically salvaged the brick from the chimney that's been removed from the building so they could match in. And that's really a stellar redo. You might, hard to believe that that was covered with all that gray vinyl siding not all that long ago. So shout out to Whitekirt and the city and Main Street are happy to be assisting that project. Other projects receiving assistance from this program, you know this already, but I think it's worth pointing out, High Lift Coffee, Emily Risticans New Business, where they're doing a lot of work over at 12th and Madison. That one's all city-funded because it's outside of the bid district. The Hook, Lanes and Games at 1916 Washington, former Rudy's Lanes, that's jointly funded by the city and Main Street, has been approved through the Main Street Design Committee. Also, Cool City Brewing Company on West Park Street, the facade on that renovation will be receiving a $10,000 grant jointly city and Main Street funded. And last but not least, out on Memorial Drive, Renee's Specialties, outside the bid district, but the facade grant assisting with the repainting, restaining of the exterior of that building, I want to say that was $2,500, going from memory likewise. So we realize the bulk of the investment here is by these businesses, but it's, it's great, I think, and I know council's been supportive for the city to be able to assist these good things happening. And while I'm at it, just one more shout out for those downtown flowers that you see in front of the Whitekirt Building because they look spectacular this year. Well done. We're headed, you might have heard, we've got a primary election coming up. You can't very well turn on television without being accosted. Partisan Primary coming up on Tuesday, August 9, a week from tomorrow. You can do your in-person absentee voting for the balance of this week, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at the city clerk's office. Just inquire at the customer service counter downstairs, they will find the city clerk. You can request a ballot online or by mail. It's getting a little close for that. You can, but you can also come by city hall and make application. Jamie, anything else you wanted to share on that?
She's got some more slides in here related to the election.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Our polling locations, you know, because you approved it, there are two. Wards one through five at St. Peter the Fisherman Catholic Church, 3211 Mishkot Road, and wards six through eight at Abundant Life Church, 1969 Roosevelt Avenue. And thanks again to both of those organizations for pride, for providing the space. It's worked out very, very well. I'll turn it over to Jamie on this one about them, their Badger Books.
So this was approved by the council last year when the combination of the polling places was approved. So we have been patiently waiting about nine months for these Badger Books to come in. These are those electronic poll books that we're using to assist us with the reduction in polling places and to greatly reduce staff time in relation to the elections. So we have these all in place now, they've been here for about a week, and everything's been tested, so we plan on rolling them out at the August 9 election as well. So they're just a poll book, everyone will still vote a paper ballot as they did previously, so it's just the sign-in process that is changing.
And as noted, because we know there are concerns about election integrity, they are not connected to the internet, and I might add that no Badgers were harmed in the production of these Badger Books, so.
We did also add a page to the city's website, and you can access it pretty easily from the homepage as well, that reviews what the Badger Books are, and then there's also like a four-minute video that someone can watch that walks you through the process as well.
Great job by the clerk's office with training of our election workers, they've been well-received. Kudos, shout out to City of Manitowoc, which helped with the instruction. Don't, don't ever say we don't cooperate on things, but Jamie and Lisa out of my office done a great job on, on lead on implementing this. So now we're down to upcoming events. You can tell it's Summer in Two Rivers, we've got a whole slug of things. 13th Annual War on the Shore Girls Fast Bitch Tournament over at Vietnam Vets Park, August 4 to 7. We're glad to welcome those, those young people and their families, and it's great to see them shuttling back and forth to the beach, you don't get that in too many tournament locations, and patronizing our local businesses. So thank you to the tournament organizers and everybody involved there. Again, shout out to our Parks and Rec Department that provides a great venue for that and other tournaments. Concert in Central Park, Two Rivers Community Band Hits of 2022, I believe it is, on Thursday night of this week, Thursday night concert, 6:30 to 8. The Two Rivers Regatta, little change there, the, because of the need for, or the desire for more RV space and hookups and more tenting room, the regatta still based in Two Rivers this coming weekend, but they will be operating out of Seagull Marina. Their course will remain offshore of Two Rivers, so if you're down by Neshota Beach over the weekend, you should see some beautiful catamarans out on the lake. If you'd like to see the area they're launching from, that will be the beach at Seagull Marina, which is bordered by our South Breakwater Trail. So if you, if you like the optics of seeing those beautiful cats lined up on the beach, it's still an, an area that's accessible to the public, but you're going to have to walk a little further. And we're great, this was a little bit of a surprise about a week ago, we were not aware of this change, but the, the event is not canceled, it's still in Two Rivers, just being better accommodated at Seagull Marina. Bands on the Beach, amazing turnout, great music from Spicy Thai Band yesterday. This coming Saturday, August 6, Nettle Hill returns for a performance, 5 to 9, down at Neshota.
You might check the Explore Two Rivers page about the regatta, because I think I saw on there earlier it said canceled, didn't I?
That got quickly, hopefully, I grabbed Lisa because we were of the understanding at like 9:00 AM it had been canceled, and about 10:00 AM I said, please take that down. So we'll double check that though. It did briefly say it was canceled.
Okay.
So Nettle Hill this coming Saturday. Tom Pease, always a great performance for the kids and adults at the Leicester Public Library, out on the front lawn, weather permitting, August 10, which is Wednesday, from 1:30 to 3:30. Back downtown, Concert in the Park, Eddie Larson's classic memories, next week, Thursday the 11th, 6 to 8. Roger Street Days over at the Fishing Village, August 12th to 13th. Then on Sunday, the 14th, it's Listening Party, 2 to 6, Rotary Pavilion at Neshota Beach, be there. Other, this is late breaking, so I didn't have a lot of details to share, but the Department of Revenue in August of each year releases their preliminary, and they'll become final in about two weeks, equalized valuation figures for the year. This is based on real estate sales in the prior year and any new construction in each local unit. And based on their study, and y'all know what's been happening in the real estate market here and around the country, we'll see what happens this year. The equalized valuation of the city per Department of Revenue grew by 18% last year. Very comparable figures countywide and for the city of Manitowoc. Haven't been able to find a statewide figure, there always a little slower getting that out, they may not give it until the final state figure, but this certainly affirms what we've all seen. Most of the driver on this is increased valuations based on honest-to-goodness market data for existing properties. We've, last year, we were in the neighborhood of 8%, and that was better than we'd seen in years, 18%. Again, we'll see what the economy does, but that's a phenomenal number. So it's late breaking, and we'll, we'll send you some information with a link to the DOR website on that. Again, maybe not on equalized value, but on any, any special events in Two Rivers and, and activities, explore two rivers dot com. The Room Tax Commission today did vote to provide some funding assistance to kites over Lake Michigan. Watch for that, and it will be touted at that major tourism event, not as sponsorship by the Room Tax Commission, but by Two Rivers Tourism, explore two rivers dot com. And we are very much looking forward to that event, and all plans point that way unless Mother Nature is otherwise, to kites returning to the shore of Lake Michigan next year. And then one beautiful parting shot of that new kayak launch over at Paddler's Park. We're also, we had a discussion today, a good meeting between our tourism interim director, Amy James, Elizabeth Rungia, our community development director, and Mike Mathis, our Parks and Rec Director, about some signage to direct people from major routes like 22nd Street, Highway 42, to let them know there is a canoe and kayak launch at Paddler's Park, because that's not evident now. And we're seeing more and more people coming here for canoeing and kayaking, notably kayaking and a lot of, a lot of kayaks on vehicles around town. That's my report. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Onto 10, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are two, there's a city council meeting for July 18th, 2022, and a city council work session meeting on July 25th, 2022. Recommended action, motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. There are two, a Room Tax Commission meeting of May 24th, 2022, and a Room Tax Commission meeting of June 21st, 2022. Recommended action, motion to receive and file. Under C, applications and petitions, we have two of those. The first one is an application for a temporary Class B retailer, retailers license from Two Rivers Youth Sports for War on the Shore, August 4th through the 7th, 2022, at 1235th Street in Two Rivers. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. And we also have an application for a commercial hauler's license, recommended for approval. It is for GFL Environmental, 428 High Street in Chilton, Wisconsin, 53014. The recommended act, action is a motion to approve the application and authorize the engineering department to issue the licenses. Under D, we have a block party permit request for 34th Street bounded by the intersecting streets of Monroe and Adam Street for September 3rd, 2022, from 9:00 AM to midnight, requested from Susan Hinkle of 2015 34th Street. The recommended action is a motion to approve the permit. Under E, summary of verified bills for the month of June, reaching $2,019,640.39. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under F, finance reports, June of 2022, we have four, and the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. The overall recommendation for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Tracy, thank you very much. Any discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that brings us to 11, which is city council formal items. Under A, we have an option to purchase strew property on 19th Street from the 290 Fund. Recommended action, council discretion. Greg, you want to walk us into that?
We apologize, I was out last week and don't have a lot of backup on this, but we had discussed in closed session at the last regular meeting, the possible terms for the purchase of that property, which the city holds an option agreement on, and that, that agreement is for the assessed value of the property. Help me out, Elizabeth, 86,000?
Eighty-five, five.
Eighty-five, five. Yeah, if you want to speak to that. The thought was to proceed with the purchase contingent upon Phase One, contingent upon a Phase One environmental assessment with funding from the 290 Fund.
The only other thing that I have to add is that also we do want to get the LGU exemption, and so we were, were able to get in, in contact with the DNR. So it is located in a TID, TID 16, which is a blight TID. However, in addition to that, we will have to pass a resolution, which includes, which we, they've given us total latitude as to what could be included in the resolution, but it will need to state the blight conditions of the property. So what we would be citing is the, the possibility that it was, it has a perception of a brownfield. And so that's what we would be including within that, and the fact that it is also in a TID that is a blight TID. So before taking title of the property, we will have to do that as well, pass that blight resolution.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm wondering if, and, and thank you, because I know that was an, an open item.
That was one of our, one of the issues we needed to look back.
So I would, I guess I would ask rather than final approval tonight, but if council would consider a motion to direct staff to proceed with the actions necessary to purchase the property, including returning a blight determination resolution back to council, but to essentially express the intent to proceed with the purchase contingent upon affirmation that we qualify for the local governmental unit exemption, which we understand will require subsequent council action on a blight resolution.
Okay. I mean, I think when we talked about this last week, I think there was a consensus that this is something that we really wanted to look into. So again, tonight, if we want to get a motion to send back to staff to pursue the lug, right? Lug? And with an intent to purchase, is that what you're looking for? Is that correct?
Yes. That means it would be subsequent council action required prior to finalizing it.
To actually do it.
Right.
Okay. Looking for a motion on that. Scott? Thank you. Do I have a, do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Council discussion.
Are we going to be able to use that building?
B, our, frankly, that's one of the things we would want to evaluate, there's no point removing a perfectly sound building, if even on an interim basis. The, the intent isn't long-term to make it a city facility, but we'll be looking into that. And frankly, the building, the main reason for pursuing that at this point is we do seem to have, seem, we, we do have some serious interest from a developer on the balance of the Eggers Plant Site. This is Kitty Corner, of course, right across the intersection from that. So the, the control of that site is seen as important. You know, quite honestly, a private, there may be a private development interest in reskinning and using that building for something, but at least, as we discussed it previously, would be to, to gain control. And there is, under the purchase agreement, even if we purchase it, and I think we got a very fair price, which was the assessed value as of four years ago, there is a provision in the purchase agreement that the current owner has up to 24 months, I don't know that they'd require that, but a period of time to continue to make use of the building before handing it over. Well, if I fully answered your question, but the intent is, look at the building, might the city have a use for it in the interim? And honestly, might a developer, probably for that adjacent site, have a use for it in the long term? Probably not looking the way it does.
Developer that.
And remember here, we do get exemption for any environmental. That is part of that and part of the reason why we want to purchase it versus somebody else purchasing it. And I believe we also have something, help me here, with the strews, that we get first rate of refusal, is that it, or do we already have an agreement in place?
It's an option to purchase that's good for, I think, another five years. So this is under terms of an existing.
Right. So if somebody does want to do something on here, we can have it locked up for five years as it stands, so. Any other council discussion? Questions? All right, see none? Let's put this to a roll call vote, Jamie.
Tracy, Coach.
Aye.
Bill LeClair.
Aye.
Darlo LeClair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Talkey.
Oh.
Okay, that brings us to B, which is cable TV equipment upgrade to resume broadcasting to public access channel. There's two parts of this. Under one, a report from staff in terms of agreement and equipment guarantees during service period.
As I understand it, and somewhat addressed in the email you have from Mr. Powell that's in your packets, this, if the city goes forward under either of the options that Spectrum gave us, either $28,000 paid period, which would buy three years of broadcasting out over the Spectrum HD channels, thereafter, there'd be a monthly charge currently estimated at $795 a month, or if we went with the other option, which is $5,435 down, and $795 a month for at least 36 months. As long as the city kept paying the $795 per month ongoing, we, the necessary equipment and support would be in place to go out over Spectrum, I keep wanting to say Charter, they call themselves that too, but, over Spectrum. So that, as long as we keep paying, we would continue to enjoy that access. So that, as long as we keep paying, we would continue to enjoy that access, and we wouldn't be buying equipment per se, but Spectrum would be adequately compensated to provide the necessary equipment for that public access channel to continue going out. So that, I think, is part of the assurance we were looking at. Staff's recommendation, this really is up to the council. You know, we pointed out, there's a number of other local governmental units around northeast Wisconsin. There's our own school district where entities have chosen when, when they, when doing it for no cost ends, they've stopped telecasting their meetings on cable. I know I've heard from, and council members have heard from some folks in the community that do the, view this as important. Staff's not here recommending that we spend $28,000 or 795, $795 a month. But if the council wishes to, that certainly is respected. You know, I've listed a budget amendment here, just, just doing some quick math, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was out most of last week. But if, if we were to do the option of $5,400 down and $795 a month for three years, that's like paying 12% interest on the money. The, the total cost is equivalent to borrowing $28,000 for three years and paying 12% on it. Well, interest rates are going up, but they haven't gone up that much. So in, in talking with the finance director, and I, I should add, Dave looked and I just was doing some quick Googling, and the various activities that are allowed as far as eligible uses of ARPA dollars, American Rescue Plan Act dollars, it, it certainly isn't clear that something of this nature would be allowable under ARPA dollars. Of course, if we, we, right now, we're planning to spend all of our ARPA dollars on lead lateral replacement, where we're also getting a 50% match, a 50/50 match. So we're not prepared to recommend that we try spending it out of the ARPA funds. Frankly, $28,000 is a lot of money, but in the context of a city with an annual budget of about 40 million, it's a pretty small percentage. So if council wishes to proceed, one option that would be pretty simple would be to advance $28,000, e- even if it's from our City Hall capital or IT capital fund. It would put those capital funds in the red, but we have fund balance to cover that. And simply budget over the next three years to, to replenish that amount. It would be a little less than $10,000 a year. If we divvy it up like we do, the, the support from the general fund and other funds for, say, City Hall or IT, general fund would be about 60% of it or $6,000 a year. The balance would be charged to the various utilities and the library. I, I guess what I'm saying is if council wants to make that investment, the details of it are eminently doable, and it could be done with an advance from a capital fund reimbursed over the next three budget cycles. Heck, over the next two, if you wanted to. So if council wants to go that route, that's what I would recommend, just advance the dollars from one of our capital funds. We'll bring back a budget amendment next time, so you can formally amend the budget, which requires a two-thirds vote. But that, in essence, is, is an option. There's not $28,000 in the operating budget lying around. Yeah, there's some things in the capital budget that have come in under budget, like the street's budget share of 17th Street. To tell you the truth, I'd just as soon keep that balance and apply it to next year's street program and borrow less for something on the order of $28,000. Finance it internally would be my recommendation.
Okay. So then when we go to two, we're looking for a budget amendment for purpose of cable TV equipment upgrade. The recommended action is a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and approve the budget amendment.
Yeah. So that, that, I'm sorry, that's changed a little bit since the agenda went out. I would simply ask that the council indicate whether you wish to authorize the commitment to charter, and we'd recommend 28,000 flat fee, which covers the next three years of telecast, and then give direction for a budget amendment that could be brought back at the next meeting.
Okay. So then let's go with a motion to do just that. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Tracy. Council discussion. Yes, Jason?
I'm just, I'm concerned about the cost of, of this. We have technology that is allowing us to stream these meetings for free, that people can take advantage of. I think if we gave $10,000 to our library to invest in tablets that people could check out, that they could screen, stream our meetings on, that it would be a much better, much more cost-effective use of funds than, you know, giving it to Spectrum for the next three years.
Jeff, I completely disagree. Think it's important that we keep every portion of this informed if they want to be informed. Even if there's 40 people that use it, that's 40 people that need it, because obviously they don't have the know-how to go about using the technology out there today. And I don't feel it's fair to those 40 people. Every person in the city counts, not just the majority.
Anybody else? Bill?
I took a poll at our, uh, a few people have cable to watch. Have feeling there's and we do have a lot of older people that they don't, just don't have computers or they don't.
Don't know how to.
How? Your buffer for
Then we can kind of see where the numbers are.
And, and those people all at that meeting, they did say, well, can we put other things on there, you know? News, uh, community boards.
Jeff?
Kind of goes back to what we had, I had brought up earlier. I mean, we can have almost all of our meetings on there if there, we can find a way to, just we have to set stuff up by ourselves, you know, for, in our, our committee meetings. And if we can get them on there, I mean, that keeps people even more informed.
I would just, on that, on that note, I, I think that's a great idea. As I understand it, that would basically give us the ability to, to, to live broadcast at least from this location, not the school board meeting room, not the county meeting, not the county's meeting room. There may be some other things the city could generate and send out from a head end here at City Hall. But just, just so there's no misunderstanding, something like the ability to livestream Board of Education meetings over cable TV? No, can't do it. And actually, there's an interconnection needed with Manitowoc for county board, and it's probably been 10 years since Spectrum and again, whoever the Manitowoc cable company is, had that interconnection to be able to do that. There are undoubtedly some things we could do as far as city-generated contact, and using this as another medium. We don't have staff dedicated to that. There's some pretty simple things that would just be duplicates of things that are now available out on Facebook or website. But as far as meetings here in this room, that gives us that capability to live broadcast.
Capability there to, like if we were to cross things over from like YouTube to get on there.
I think we could have different types of media feed out of City Hall, but yeah.
Well, we, technically, we could YouTube our stuff on our committee meetings and channel it through there.
That I don't know. I'm not a, I'm not a tech whiz on that.
I'm not saying that we have to, if we could, I mean, that would be really nice. I mean, more informed on what's going on.
Or tape things.
Right, right. Exactly.
Scott? Oh, you like that?
Um, yeah. No, I, I kind of agree with Jason. It is a lot of money to spend. But I think if we can use it for other things too, just besides our three city council meetings a month, then I think it'll be worth the investment. I think we just, we need to figure out what that other stuff we can do with it. And I think we can do other things that are cool and, and informing people that don't have Facebook or don't have the internet. I think it's a good thing.
Cause there are those people out there. There really are.
Yep.
It's, it's shocking to us probably here, but there, there's a lot of people in the, that don't have that access. That might be, and I'm not picking on the older people, but might be in their 80s that still care and want to be informed, but they don't even have a computer, much less know how to use it. Tracy?
Well, I'm old enough to remember that we used to have on cable bulletin boards, and they would just stream all the events and all the information non-stop. And I'm sure even though, you know, you can have other things instantaneously, that old school stuff still works.
Do we, do we know what percentage of Manitowoc residents have cable? Cable television?
And we were told we, that was, that was not available information, as I understand it, from the cable company.
That seems like they're controlling the information. Cause this doesn't, this doesn't give everyone in the community access to council meetings.
I, I tried to get that information and they, they already asked a bunch of, how many people in Two Rivers have cable TV?
Say it might be more than what you think. Obviously, the numbers are dwindling, but it, it may not capture everyone, but there's an audience out there that has cable that can't access it via the internet, that really want this done. That I do know, because I hear from them. And I know City Manager's Office has heard from those people, as well as have Jeff, and I'm sure other council members, have heard that same thing, and you hate the, I don't like to spend $28,000 any more than the people next to me. I really don't. Trust me, ask me budget time. But we have to do what's right for everyone. Bonnie?
To me, what is Rick getting at? He sounds like he's not in favor of this, or at least because he said this is the way, when he said the wave of the future is digital streaming. And
I think you've already heard a staff recommendation that there are a lot of other ways people can get it. I think Rick is simply echoing that and suggesting there are other ways council might want to spend money. But at the end of the day, that's your decision. That's not ours as staff.
No, I understand that he
That's how I read his email. It was saying, just, yeah, for what it's worth, it wasn't a technical information piece. It was a, a recommendation. We can recommend, and we already have from staff, on balance. We're not sitting here recommending you spend $28,000. We're not the ones that answer directly to the voters. You are. So I would just, I, that's how I read it. I think that's, that's nice extraneous information. Or people are getting their information livestreaming from other digital media. What we're talking about is how big of a residual of people are relying on cable TV. Nationwide, this, I'm looking at a stat that says 56% of adults in the US get their information via cable or satellite. And of course, what the breakout is there, I don't know either.
I guess I'm just making the comparison of the same council that wanted Facebook to be a legitimate means of communicating. But this, and then he's trying to say how this is becoming the future thing, and yet I'm just comparing it, that's all. I don't know. It, I don't know.
There's still people that subscribe to the Herald Times reporter.
What?
It's, it's, you know, that, I think somebody mentioned, there is a communication problem, because it used to be everybody read the daily newspaper. True, false, or otherwise, there was at least a consistent platform of information. I'm not going to get political here, but you see the implications at the, a national level. We see them at the local level. How do you get the word out other than letting people see and judge for themselves what's going on? Otherwise, they're cynical. It's great that we do a newsletter insert in the utility bills. Who produces it? The city. Well, that's not the same as having object, either objective outside media, which has withered away at the local level, or letting people see for themselves. And there's no disputing if you can tune in and watch it.
Tracy? Did you have your hand up? Thought you did.
No, I was covering this.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I thought you did.
Scott was telling me you did.
I was waving.
Okay. So, um, and I think we just need to be clear that if you stream Spectrum, you, you will not get our station, correct?
That's what I understand.
So you actually have to physically have that coaxial cable plugged into your TV to get it. So I think just
Out on the streaming service. Thank you. Point well made.
Okay. So we want the city manager to come back with a budget amendment for next, next meeting.
Right.
Do you need him?
Reflecting the $28,000 purchase.
And that's what we have a motion on the table for now. Barring any more council discussion, all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. Very good. For information only, Greg?
Sorry about that. Not a whole lot. Just again, reminders of our August meetings. The council regu, the next regular meeting in two weeks on the 15th. This is five Monday month, so the suggestion is if the council doesn't object, that the work session would be on August 29th, talking with members of the Personnel and Finance Committee, or at least talking with the Chair, Jeff and Adam after the last meeting. The thought was Monday's work the best, and so we would target that Monday, the 22nd, for a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting.
I think that works best for Bonnie as well, Mondays. Personnel Finance Mondays. We, we, we can do it this month on a Monday. Okay.
But for the rest of you, you, you have a city meeting free Monday on the 22nd, but please mark your calendars for the 29th for the work session.
All right. Very good. So closed session. We do have one item in closed session. Are we gonna?
This, uh, this one, I would expect action and follow-up. The council had previously given some preliminary authorization about the purchase of a tax-acquired property the county owns at 1910 20th Street. That was back in October. We had some follow-up on this and we're asking council to, after consideration of information in closed session, reaffirm an offer on the property. So likely, if anybody wants to stick around for when the council reconvenes an open session, there may be action.
All right. That gets us to 13, closed session. City council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851E when deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, discuss the proposed purchase from Manitowoc County of the acquired property at 1910 20th Street. Looking for, yep, looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Jeff, seconded by Bill. Any council discussion? This is a roll call vote. Jamie?
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc. Motion carries.
All right, two minutes, maybe three minutes. We'll give city staff to prepare, and we'll be back at it.